Good morning, welcome to a January 23rd, 2018, Brevard County Commission. We have a quorum, everybody's here, so I'll call this meeting to order. And as we have been doing, we're gonna open with a moment of silence. Thank you. Commissioner Tabia, you have the pledge.
Please stand and join me in the virtual lead. I pledge allegiance to the empire of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two sets of minutes to approve, December 5th and December 7th. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Barfield, second by Commissioner Isnardi, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes 5-0. We're moving into resolutions and awards and presentations. Commissioner Barfield, this is yours this morning, sir.
Yes, as we all know, about a year ago, we, the legislator, legislation put Central Florida Expressway Authority, put the Brevard County on the seat there as one of the commissioners. And I was the one who was selected to be that commissioner representing our commission. So what I thought would be very important to do is to invite Lord Kelly and her crew here. Lord Kelly is the director of the CFX, Central Florida Expressway Authority. And I thought it'd be nice to give a briefing to the public and to the commission about what it's all about and what the future holds for Brevard County and why it's very important. And it's, for me, it's been, it's been very enlightening to learn how the development over the 2040 plan and for the future, how growth will happen towards the, from Orlando towards us and from us towards Orlando. So Ms. Kelly, would you like to come up and speak, please, and give us a little presentation?
Good morning. I am so excited to be in Brevard County. I play a lot over here and I'm really excited to begin working over here as well. I sincerely appreciate Commissioner Barfield's service to our board. He is an immense, important part of the agency and we really appreciate your service. Before I get started, I want to introduce a couple of people that came with me today. I have with me Mimi Madeiros, who is our board coordinator, and also Michelle Mikeish, who is my chief of staff. And I'd like to start out by showing you a video that kind of gives you a little background about what Central Florida Expressway Authority is all about.
At the Central Florida Expressway Authority, we like to say we go the extra mile for our customers, or 118 miles, including the new Wakava Parkway, connecting the more than 68 million visitors and 3 million residents in Brevard, Lake, Orange, Osceola, and Seminole Counties, as they travel to the theme parks, commute to work, or to head across town for a game. What makes us different? We are driven to serve as the only toll agency where locals are in the driver's seat, literally. CFX is governed by local officials and representatives from all five counties and the city of Orlando. The tolls you pay here, stay here, reinvested right back into Central Florida, and more than 98% of our work is performed by the private sector, that's jobs for local businesses. We introduced EPAS in 1994, the first electronic toll payment system in Florida. Today, hundreds of thousands of local drivers choose EPAS, well, because of our exclusive local benefits. Like, only EPAS gives customer discounts up to 20% for frequent use on all CFX roads. And our board believes that every resident should have an EPAS, so they made our EPAS toll sticker available for free to all residents. Yes, that includes business accounts and commercial fleets, too. Super college fans can drive with pride with EPAS Night Pass, Gator Pass, or Knoll Pass Specialty Toll Transponders. For our customers on the go, we opened the first drive-up customer service lanes in the U.S., our reload lanes, where EPAS customers can reload their accounts with cash or credit. And the best part, EPAS is accepted on all toll roads in Florida, Georgia, and North Carolina. Plus, you can use EPAS to pay for parking at Orlando International Airport. With over $1.6 billion in local projects and improvements in the next five years, CFX will be creating more than 12,000 local jobs and over $700 million in earned wages. CFX, bringing mobility to our customers' daily lives and economic development to the local communities and businesses we serve. Local jobs, local benefits, world-class innovation.
As the video stated, we now serve since 2014, five different counties. We serve Lake, Seminole, Orange, Osceola, and this past year, Brevard. We're really excited about servicing this regional area because there is so much demand and growth in Central Florida. And as we look at this graphic, it's no surprise that Brevard is serving on our board. 8% of our customers live in Brevard County. That means your constituents are also our customers. Just this past year, we worked and developed a 2040 master plan that identified up to $12.2 billion worth of potential projects over the next 30 years. Unlike other toll agencies throughout Florida, we are also tasked with working with our transit partners. So as we grow and expand our system and look at new corridors, we're also looking at ways to accommodate transit along our right-of-way. This is a map of the 2040 master plan and the potential corridors that we're studying. And you can see from this map that most of the growth and activity is in the southeast region, I would say, much more than half. And this supports the connectivity between Orange and Osceola and Brevard County. Now, as we look at the highlighted region here, I can tell you, this area is growing so much, and it's evident in all the studies that we're doing. We've got studies underway for the entire Beltway for Osceola County, but we also have actively underway Corridor I and Corridor H, which is the result of the East Central Florida Corridor Task Force. In addition to the task force projects that were brought forward, they also looked at an extension of State Road 408, all the way out to 95. And the next phase of the 408 extension is where it stops today, all the way out to 520. That project is gonna be moved to the next phase of development in March, that will go to our board. So we're excited about moving some of these projects forward. The I and the H corridor study will be completed around December of this year. Now, the beach line was the very first time we looked at accommodating transit in a corridor. And so now, the beach line accommodates not one, but two potential modes of transit along its roadway. And that, I believe, is just smart for future planning. And you can see from this graphic that the transit corridors will be moved to the south of the beach line, throughout the whole corridor. And we are now in the midst of completing the Innovation Way interchange. So as you drive the beach line today, if you look, there is a huge interchange being completed. It'll actually be open March 9th. But this is the first example, too, of an interchange that's accommodating transit. There's bridging so that if the transit's built in the future, that it can be built on the surface of the, you know, of the roadway or the ground, instead of elevating. And so it minimizes costs as well for the transit. So we're excited about this road being open. We have a $1.6 billion work plan going on right now. A good portion of that is going toward the 408-I4 interchange, that's quite a bit, it's $230 million. We also are completing the Wakava Parkway. That's actually gonna be open to traffic on March 31st. And we're extremely excited about that, because that opens up a whole new transportation option to the people that live in the northeast portion of our region. I am, oops, I am so excited to be working with all of you. I'm extremely grateful for Commissioner Barfield's service to our agency. It's been wonderful having you all, and I look forward to working with you for many years in the future. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And a thank you to Commissioner Barfield for serving on that board also. Thank you for that, sir, above and beyond. We are moving into consent agendas. Anybody on the commission want to pull any of the items? County attorney, I mean county manager?
Commissioners, we'd like to pull 2C1 for the purpose of discussion and to give the board some additional information.
Okay, thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to approve all the consent agenda other than item 2C1. I have a motion by Commissioner Barfield. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Isnardi, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes 5-0. Item 2C1, county manager, did you want to open this since you pulled this, or?
Yes, I'm looking for Mr. Helmer, who I believe just stepped outside, but he should be in momentarily.
Okay.
Here he comes.
I do have a card on this item. Joel Sasslow, if you want to come forward and be ready, sir.
Thank you, commissioners. This item is a project that was originally put into the CIP in September of 16, approved by the board at that time. We have since put the, designed the project, put it out to bid. The bids took place in June, or the bidding started in June, prior to all of these hurricanes and storms and so forth that we've had. And since that time, we've, a part of the project that's very important is pumping systems at the Sykes Creek Plant. Although it's a $5 million project, $600,000 or $700,000 relates to these pumps that are in dire need of replacement. What's happened lately, in the last few weeks, is that we discovered we can't get parts for them anymore, so this has turned into an emergency for us. So we need to get the opportunity to go ahead and move forward with bidding for the pumps replacement only, which is a portion of that $5 million, probably $600,000 or $700,000. In addition to that, the storms resulted in us going back and doing a reprioritization of our CIP. I and I has become a big issue, we have other things that are very important, so the remainder of the project would be bid out again at a later date. And we would have the opportunity with this action to move forward with the pump replacement at Sykes Creek Plant.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sasslow?
Yes, ma'am.
If you would state your name and address for the record.
My name is Joel Sasslow. I live at 900 Lake Harney Road, Osteen, Florida. I'm here representing Caron Collier Incorporated. I am the operations manager. As the gentleman said, back in July was when the bid date was. This was bid out, we were the apparent low bidder, in August, August 23rd exactly, there was a meeting to, I guess, vet our qualifications. And we were misrepresented by some county staff there. We were, and subsequent to that, we had another meeting, which we protested the bid that we were gonna give them to another contractor. The bids were all competitive. We were at $5,024,000. The next bidder was at $5,064,000. The third bidder was $5,087,000. Now this, we are more than qualified to do this job. And we, in the email I just got notifying us Thursday that the county commissioners were gonna meet to reject the bids, or asked to be rejected, at the end of that, I was, the last statement in there from the purchasing manager, said that we were more than welcome to bid on the next two projects as they split them up. Well, we're already qualif, we're already low on the project. We could have already been working on these things. So what I'm asking you is not to reject the bids.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Joel Rail?
My name is Joe Rail. I reside at 20201 Grassroots Road, Leesburg, Groveland, Florida, and I represent Caron Collier as well. Throughout this entire process, this, I actually am one of the owners of Caron Collier. Throughout this entire process of this bid going in and trying to get the award on this bid, I had my eyes open to some really interesting things that I didn't even know. There's certain laws, I guess, that they go by to allow certain individuals to bid. And we actually, we actually met the qualifications for the bid. When Mr. Sasslow mentioned that we were misrepresented at the original hearing to vet us as a contractor, there was a gentleman by the name of Mr. Helpling that actually kind of ran the, ran the meeting, at least advised the council, there was a three or four member counsel that voted on this. And our company has been in, the corporation's been in business since about 2005. And we had a minor, a simple name change from Villages Construction over to Caron Collier. And one of the statements that was made, and the reason it is, is because the Villages didn't want us, didn't want us to confuse them with, didn't want us confusing senior citizens daycare with construction work, and I understand that. But as a result of some of the verbiage that Mr. Helpling put out, he stated that we were actually a very complex corporation, which we're not. We still have the original, from when we first went in the business, we still have the original banking account from our, that's how simple this corporation is, we had a simple name change. He stated that we were actually a very complex corporation, leading the gentleman and the women on this other board, to believe that there was something underlying that was a problem. He further stated that, one of the, one of the, the lady that vets us financially, that checks us out financially, said, "There's nothing here to look at. There's nothing good, there's nothing bad, there's nothing, they're a good, comfortable company, they're, all of their finances are in line." And Mr. Helpling took it upon himself to go on and state that there was some questionable things there, too. There's not. We're very simple. We're the small guy. We feel like what's happened in this situation is there's a big guy that's the next bidder, and they're very comfortable with that, with that other company. And so therefore, they're willing to just automatically go that direction and kick us out. We're not a big corporation, we're not any kind of complex corporation, we're very simple. We're a family-owned business, made up of, the corporate owners are two brothers in Christ that are corporation owners that happened to decide to come together and work for, and do infrastructure work. One of the owners was actually one of the owners of Prime Construction, which has done a ton of work over here, too. We enjoy working for the county. We've done work for the county before. In fact, this question came up about the simple name change back in, back at the beginning of the year. And Owen Collard, who also sat, was one of the advisors on this, on this, on this board, or at least an advisor to the board, knew all of that. He went through all that. I just don't understand how it is that it's fallen in your laps for us to, for you to vote to get rid of us as a contractor when we have, when we are a vetted contractor with the county. We've been pre-qualified with the county. And then for them to pull this back to us, this would be, it wouldn't be devastating to us, we're gonna survive. We're very well financed, we're not gonna fall apart. But what we don't want to do is have everything handed to the, to the big contractor that they want to hand it to for no good reason. And what's, what, we are currently under a protest in this thing, so even if you do vote to rebid this, it can't really be rebid without going through a, while it's under protest. And we're not willing to remove our protest because we are in a position to where this should come our way, it should have already come our way. And had it come our way, there would not be this quote-unquote "emergency" that everybody has invented all of a sudden from Irma. It would have already be, it would already be three-quarters of the way finished, if not finished by now. So I implore you to please look into this situation and see, before you vote or as you vote, think about what really is going on here. There's a, there's a lot of back-covering that's going on here. And we pointed that out in the meeting, in the many, in many of the meetings and in many of the emails that we have sent back and forth, it's been very well outlined. And for whatever reason, this is their latest attempt to try to get this thing to go away because there's a lot of dirtiness going on down there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner, do you have any questions? Ms. Leslie?
Yes, I'd like to at least make some corrections on a couple items that were stated. We have not received a protest in purchasing at this point. They, the requests that we have received, our public records request based on the qualification committee that was held. At that pre-qualification committee meeting, which is required to award any of our bid projects, Virginia from Natural Resources, Virginia Barker, Yuri Rodriguez, our Solid Waste Director, and Jen Helmer were all three on that committee. So as far as their review of the bid documents and the pre-qualification package, that was done by three of your directors that do these projects on a regular basis. At that meeting, there was some issues with the notice and did they have ability to come there and provide their side of their qualifications. We scheduled a second meeting for the company to come in and talk to the committee. At that meeting, there were, the attorney was there present, and it started to get into a protest committee hearing, which that was not the form for that, that was a rescheduled pre-qualification meeting. Additional documents were requested, and so it was tabled at that meeting to provide the documents to the company, to let them review, and then we would reschedule that pre-qualification to determine an apparent low bidder and if they were qualified. So at this point, there is no protest, we're still in the evaluation of the apparent low bidder, the public records have all been provided. And at this point, because of the situation with the pumping systems, this is where we are at today. We still have not qualified a bidder yet for this project. And to do that, we still need to go through a pre-qualification process, and we still need to go through, if there is a protest, through that process.
Can I add anything to this, sir?
If one of the commissioners call you up, sir, but, commissioners?
Yeah, I'm interested in what you, what you could add to it.
Yes, sir, come forward.
The, the interesting thing about, about what I just heard is that there was a, an original meeting, the original meeting that we were advised to not go to by county staff. They said, "We do not advise that you go to it, it's, it's not, not for you to be there." That's what we were told. So the second meeting, which they don't ordinarily do, they actually had that because they knew they got their butts in a wringer and they were caught on this thing, and it looked really bad. At that point, we did file a protest, and a protest is pending. And all the way along this thing, everything has been delayed, like you, I have never in my life seen anything like this. It gets delayed, we'll call and ask for, ask for the emails and the discussion, which the public is allowed to have, and it'll go on for months before we get the response from these things. It's, it's unfathomable what I've seen here. I've never seen this anywhere in any municipality or any, any government situation, anywhere that I've been involved with in my life. I've been doing this for a long time, my people have been doing it for a whole lot longer than I have, but they've never seen anything like this. It's delay after delay after delay after delay. And what the lady was saying is that yes, there was a second meeting, and we did go to the second meeting. And at that meeting, we, they chose at that point to not even vote, to not vet us at that point. It was actually gonna be continued to another meeting. We went to go, we asked for the information that we wanted to have, that is, that we're allowed to have as a public or as someone's contractor bidding on a project. And you guys set up, the county sets up the rules for bidding on a project, and the qualifications and all that kind of thing. We met all of those things. That's why they chose not to bid, not to vote on it at that second meeting. When it was furthered to have a third meeting, what actually took place is we started asking for more information, and as we started asking for more information, there was a, there was this, this push to jam it into the following Monday's meeting before we even got our information that we asked for, and they knew we hadn't received the information. It was, it was several months later before we ever got the county's dialogue back and forth on this with the other contract that they were trying to, that they were trying to vet in this thing. We were able to get it from Jones Edmonds, who is the actual, the engineer on the project, we were able to get it from them before we got it from the county. And there's some, there's some bullet points, there's some things in there that are really questionable, and I know you don't want to get into all that right now, but I can tell you right now, this thing stinks to high heavens. And I'm not saying it was that particular, those, that particular three, three people that were in that meeting that chose to put, further the meeting to the next meeting, they seemed to be as bewildered as we were about it. They seemed to be totally confused by the whole situation, that, that there would be this many questions on something, and, you know, I hate to use the word, but we were flat-out slandered at this thing. We, some of the statements that were made at this thing were just unfathomable. It was just crazy, just, just so far out there to try to get the focus of this board, this board meeting that we were not supposed to attend, the first one, to get the focus, to mess their focus all up and just say, "You know what, let's use this other contractor." So yes, there is a, there is a protest pending. And here we are, how many months later, and we still don't have an answer on our protest?
Yep.
And then for, to walk into this meeting this morning and find out that there is no protest? This is what I'm talking about, this is crazy.
If we, if we went ahead with the bid, couldn't we make this part of the project be expedited, be first on top of it if we went forward with the bid procedure?
If we move forward with the bid, we still have to determine who's the qualified low bidder, which hasn't been determined yet.
Okay.
Because the meetings have been postponed.
Okay.
And the delays have been in the public records request, there were several, and specific to the format that they needed to be provided. In addition, the records request involved, as he stated, the gentleman stated, records from the engineering firm, so there's time involved in that. So if we move forward, we still would go through the pre-qualification of the apparent low bidder, based on their qualifications that have already been submitted, the committee would reconvene and determine if they are qualified. At that point, whether they are deemed qualified or not, then the protest would be received if the committee then found them still disqualified based on their qualifications.
Let me ask you one more question. So if, if we went ahead forward with the bid, and say we did what you're asking to do, we still have to go out for another bid for this project also, don't we?
Yes.
So I'm a little, my head's not wrapping around how this is gonna be more expedient for us if we, if we do this. So commissioners, do you have any comments here? Commissioner Isnardi?
I would agree. I mean, if we're just moving that project ahead of the game, I just don't understand, and I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, but this is what people hate about government, they should never take this long. And if it's taking too long... hate about government. They should never take this long. And if it's taking too long, then, then, then why? I mean, especially if it's something that needs to be done quickly. I don't understand why we would have to completely get rid of a current project or a current bid for project if we've already gone through all these steps and you have possibly qualified bidders for this project in these meetings and this waiting and these forms. And I mean, I, I'm just a little confused on that.
Can I, can I add to that?
Sir, let me, let her answer first and, okay. Yes, ma'am.
As far as on the process, because we can move forward with the bids that we have received. We can move forward with pre-qualifying and going through that step, reconvening the committee, the original committee, reviewing the bids, and reevaluating the qualification documents from the apparent low bidder. If the committee determines they're not qualified, then we go to the next bidder. So if that process follows how it's supposed to, and we go to the second, we make the award, then yes, that would be expedited compared to if we had a protest and have to wait for that process.
Okay. Commissioner Barfield?
First off, I don't want to get into procurement side of it. I'm more concerned about my, my constituents. It's 45,000 people. And these pumps are at a critical stage. And we had the briefings on that about this. And my real concern right now is getting those pumps replaced. There is, it's, it's obsolete. There's no parts. If we lose one of them, it leaves a backup that may or may not survive. We lose that, then we have sewage backing up in people's houses potentially, if I'm correct.
That's correct.
So at this point, I, I hear what you're saying, and I'm concerned about that. But my number one priority right now is to make sure we get these pumps replaced. So first off, it's a $5 million job. This is the 600,000 part of it. If, pull that out, get that done. We can reject bids or not reject bids, but my priority, like I said, is I want to make sure that sewage treatment plant, those pumps are operational. If this is, if we do reject this, it's going to be competed again, minus the pump, without that in there. I don't, I work in government contracting a lot and procurements, and I stay out of it, at this level because that's not really our responsibility to evaluate proposals. It's our duty to select. So what I would recommend right now is we go ahead and reject these bids. We reject them. You guys have an opportunity to bid on it again, minus the pumps. We get these pumps done. And to me, that's, that's the priority is those pumps. So that's what I have to say.
Commissioner Smith?
I would like to, I would like to support what Commissioner Barfield just said. If we're in an emergency situation, and I have to trust, that we are, I, I trust our directors, I trust our staff to give us valuable information. I really don't know all that went on. Some of what you said really causes me some concern. But as Mr. Barfield said, we're in a critical position with these pumps. We really need to get those taken care of. So moving on from that, I would suggest that the board accept the fact that we have to replace these pumps. And then we can put the remainder of this, take that out of the original bid, and put this out for bid again.
Well, you understand, I'm, I'm, I'm actually, I'm qualified. They've invited me to, to bid if they in fact rebid this. They've said, "We, we invite you to bid this." So in other words, I'm, I'm going to bid the thing. The problem is this. We have farted around with this thing for so long. These, these pumps could have been changed out so long ago, your constituents would have never known what was going on with their toilets or any kind of backflow issues. What I'm trying to tell you is, we would have already had this finished if we hadn't have been waylaid like we were at this.
Your point's well taken, but we can't, we can't go back and change anything. But what we can do-
No, we can start doing the right thing now.
Exactly. So we can, we can move forward with that. And we, as a commission, we can look at what you've suggested. We can ask our staff, what about these accusations and these concerns, and move forward from that. And this would be put out to rebid. And you would certainly be, at that point, hopefully qualified. You can raise your objections at that point in time. That buys us as a county some time because we're going to have these pumps fixed. But I would encourage, since I've been on this board, it's been my, one of my positions that I champion is that we are business friendly in our staff decisions when we're dealing with business people. And I think that's extremely important because when we're business friendly, we send out the message that we, as a county, we welcome business, we welcome new businesses, and we want to treat everyone fairly. So I would, I would recommend we follow Commissioner Barfield's suggestion that we do these repairs, get the emergency repairs done, and put this out to bid again.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Just, there's some inaccuracies on the record that I'd like to correct because our office was involved in some of the public records requests with the county attorney's office. And I can tell you right now that at different times, when the attorney made, on behalf of Car Collier, made public records requests, ours were timely responded to. He asked for quite a bit of records. And at one point, he refused to take possession of the records because he didn't want to take possession of those records until he had responses from the A and E on the project as well. So we had records available for him to review, and he refused to even review them or accept them at that point in time. That was his choice. We were continuing to try and move forward with the pre-qualification meetings, and they kept insisting that they needed additional documentation before we went forward. And in some cases, he asked for additional records. So the delay was not on all, all the county's side. We were trying to accommodate them, to give them everything they wanted. So I want to make that clear for the record. You, sir, may not be aware of all the back and forth that went between your attorney and, and requesting records. So please, please be aware of that.
The thing is, is what the county mayor may not know, what the council may not know-
I'm sorry, sir. Hold on just a second. If, if, are you asking him a question? Would you like a response?
No, no. Simply responding to some of the statements that have been made. And at one point, his attorney thanked us for providing the records and was actually talking about filing some kind of lawsuit against the A and E because of the time it took them to put the records together. Then when they had the records together, he didn't want them in that format. He wanted them in a native format, which was his right. But we had to convey that, and that took additional time. So just understand that there's a lot that went on here, and not all, you know, this doesn't necessarily lay at the, at the, at the feet of county staff. They were trying to do the best they could.
Thank you. Commissioner Tobias?
Madam Chair, before I speak, can, can we hear from the county attorney on this one?
Yes, sir.
He's had his light on a little bit longer than mine.
Commissioners, I think we have the tail wagging the dog here. The, the situation is such that if there are these kinds of allegations being made, which are, you know, common these days, I'm sure the county mayor is just going to look into it, find out what actually happened, and he'll resolve it if there's a problem. But the problem is, right now, you've got an emergency to deal with. You've got to change in the project because of that emergency. And you, you just can't go forward on the other project as it was originally proposed. So do what you've got to do, if that's what you want to do.
Yes, sir.
Don't worry about the rest of it. Let the county manager figure out whether or not there's a problem with the process that they're using.
Forgive me for asking this online. Let me ask you an educational question for me. Is it possible to, to allow these bids go through and just pull out the $600?
It sounds to me like you're going to have to rebid it based upon what I've heard from the others, from the staff.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we accept the, the-
Delise, you-
-proposal to move forward with the emergency repair of these pumps, and that we put this, the remainder, remove that $600,000 from the original bid and put this out for rebid.
Thank you. I have a motion on table. Do I have a second?
I have a second, but a question on that, too. You're basically, we're going to reject all bids and, and then put out for bid the pumps, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Tobias? Okay. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you. This sounds, I'm in support of Commissioner Barfield's idea. I just had one quick question from the bidding process. If we were to pull out this, is, this $600,000, is that integral in the entire $5 million project? Or will we end up, you know, is there any savings of doing these together? Or can we literally pull out the $600,000 and then you believe when we go through, if we do go through with this project, it will be decreased by $600,000? Or is there some savings in your opinion by doing them together?
We would have to put it back out to bid again. So it depends on how the bids would come out of the, of the rest of the project. It's not part of the 600 or 700,000. So once that goes out to bid again, we don't have any idea what we're going to get until the bids come in. So it could be different.
A brief, brief follow-up. And, and I'm sorry for, for my lack of knowledge. But does this require digging that will need to be redug again, or piping that will need, I mean, is, is there anything that will be, need to be redone because of these pipes? Are they-
I don't think so. I think it's mutually exclusive. I'm, I'm pretty sure.
Thank you.
I have a motion on the table by Commissioner Smith, a second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you. Moving forward to public comments. And we have two public comment cards. Mr. Matt Collins?
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Matthew Collins. I've been a Brevard resident for, for 17 years. I live at 555 Chestnut Street, West Melbourne, Florida. Father of, of three wonderful kids, and my wife's a teacher at Crotton Elementary. I'm here today for really two reasons. One, to make you aware of some drainage issues that affect my neighborhood. And, and two, to ask for your help and support to find a solution. So I live in West Melbourne. The neighborhood's called Woodland Manor. It's about 40 homes in the neighborhood. And we've suffered from repeated damage due to poor drainage issues, and we're at high risk for, for future issues. My house was first flooded in Fay in 2008. As, as we all know, that was a lot of rain, estimated at 20-plus inches. I had about eight inches of water inside my entire house. My house was again flooded in Irma, pretty much at the same level, eight or nine inches in my house, but only half the amount of, of rainfall, at about 10 inches. We've also experienced many near misses, or what I call near misses. I'll cite two examples. September 13th, 2016, a week or so before Hurricane Matthew, rainfall about three and a half inches. After three and a half inches of rain, I was within a couple inches of my house being flooded. Again, September 2nd, 2017, a week before Hurricane Irma, about four and a half inches of rain. My house was, was again within inches of being flooded. You know, since my, I was flooded in 2008, and after many of these near misses, I've reached out to the public work folks and, at both the city and the county level, asking for help and for changes. And, and nothing's been done, or no corrective action's been taken. More recently, after engaging the, the City Council of West Melbourne, I'm getting movement on their side. And I believe they'll be reaching out to the county to work with you guys towards a solution. I won't get into the specifics. I've sent you guys a letter recently this week outlining my concerns, as well as some slides trying to get to the details of it. But the main issue at the county level is really two things. The, the ownership of the Evans Canal and, and the culvert that goes into the one entry and exit out of my neighborhood is at high risk. It's undersized. It's the original. It's old. And it's already eroding and at risk of washing out, much like some of the other roads right there and off of Crane Creek, which I know you guys are aware of. And I think, secondly, just the way all the water is routed there, near the Oaks Theater, all of that water is brought towards my neighborhood instead of towards Crane Creek in front of that culvert, just making the problem worse. So I know I'm running out of time. Again, I really just ask you guys to look into those details and take a good look and see what you guys can do to help. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Isnardi?
Yes, we did get your letter. And I'm not sure if you've been copied on some of those emails, how staff is working with the city of West Melbourne. And I know West Melbourne has a surveyor out there looking at how they can get that, pull that water and get it into the county system sooner. So it'll help move it quicker. So we're on top of it. I just want you to know. You've got lots of eyes and lots of people looking to help.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Charles Tovey?
Charles Tovey, 2555 Roberts Road, Melbourne. Thank you, Commissioner Smith and staff, for accepting my phone calls and the grief that I express over the conditions that are occurring. And I also, you get above-average marks for Commissioner Barfield and Commissioner Smith for your performance in our community the past four years. We don't agree on everything, but you did a ex, a good job at your fields and especially with your experience. And we don't hold you to the things that these lifetime politicians should be held to. They know better. And if you don't believe in God, believe in good orderly direction. And for me, I don't have anything to lose but dirt. If what I believe in doesn't come true, then I go to dirt like everybody else. But what if I, if it does come true? Anyways, that's my right on religion. I don't have time for that right now. The women's program in Volusia County for inmates do, they just opened up for the women to save $10 on each uniform. And this is what I think that we should utilize our inmates for more positive and productive programs, other than just sitting in there and doing nothing and thinking of ways to, my rights. Well, it all started with the FEMA trailer. And then it went to the biggest oak tree that was excavated from my neighbor. And then it went to repeat violence, repeat violence. I don't even know the woman. And this is a politician, and repeat violence brings me to court. And I go through all the stuff, and the judge says, "Ma'am, you can't do that." And they do it anyways. And not only her, but the Brevard County Sheriff's Department and the rest of them. And my rights. Then it progressed to, where are we at today? Yay. I'm thinking the jurisdiction, it's, it's something forever jurisdiction, permanent jurisdiction. That's where we're at today. And it all started from a FEMA trailer. And it progressed and progressed and progressed. And the judge says, "Ma'am, you can't do that." And they do it anyways. And this is about the CRA laws and everything else. And it's all in a little corridor of corruption. I did want to thank everybody again and wish them a happy new year. And I have things to do. I have comments about the relief on the sewage and the drainage. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Tovey. Moving into public hearings, item 4A.
Item 4A is a petition to vacate portions of two public utility and drainage easements and one public utility easement. The purpose is to enable the landowner petitioner to re-divide the land into two building lots. And there's no objections to this request.
Thank you, sir. And I have no cards. Commission, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve the vacating.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Isnardi, a second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Public hearings, item 4B.
Madam Chairman, this is an amendment to the Terps Development Ordinance, which is designed to correct the scrupulous error that occurred back in 1994.
Thank you, sir. Commission, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve this ordinance.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. We have a time certain on item C, so I'm going to move to item D. And I do have one card on this. Chief?
Commissioners, our item is to amend the current rate resolution to reflect the EMS user fees that you approved at the last meeting, January 9th.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Don Hughes? Thank you for coming, sir. Would you state your name and address for the record?
Good morning, commissioners. Don Hughes, 5632 Loblawi Place in Grant, Florida. Today, I'm speaking to you as the Fire Chief of the City of Satellite Beach, and also my comments are reflective of the city of Titusville, Melbourne, and Palm Bay as of this morning. We understand the need for government to fund our EMS system, and that's a fundamental understanding. Couple of things that's happened on the Fire Chiefs Association's side is that we're a little taken back on the rate increase because four years ago, when Brevard County Commissioners unilaterally got rid of the first responder- Commissioners unilaterally got rid of the first responder program, which gave municipal partners an offset of their cost for delivery of service, when that was gone, we said, well, could you not go ahead and add like a $50 rate to your current rate charge? And in that way, that would fund the first responder program. We were told that that could be done, but yet at the end of the day, it wouldn't really raise the funds because it would be greater than what the Medicare allowable rate is and therefore would probably not work. So we're a little bit, you know, taken back because this increase is supposedly going to raise a million dollars, but I believe that these rates are substantially larger than what the current Medicare allowable is. With that said, and let me close here, is that when we start looking at the delivery of fire EMS services, I just want to speak to you guys and from the cities that I've worked with, is that the municipalities are standing here waiting to be part of the solution. We're waiting to be set at the table. We're waiting to see if that we as a system can look to see, how do we deliver fire EMS, not just to the constituents of our city, but we look at it from a system-wide standpoint. So with that said, I, you know, you have your action items that you need to take, but I wanted to speak as the Fire Chiefs Association, Satellite Beach Fire Department and Titusville, Melbourne and Palm Bay on this item.
Thank you, sir. Commission, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Smith?
Yeah. I had Mr. Hughes in my office yesterday and, and he expressed his concern that he just expressed now. And one thing that he said that really caused me some interest was, he said that rates would be higher than Medicare allow. Is that, is that not-
Yeah. Commissioners, and as we had discussed at, at the last meeting, the ambulance rates that were given to the board, that the board approved, that increase in rate brings us back to the average of the 52 jurisdictions that was included in that item. And we made clear to the board at that time that 70% of the transports that occur would not be affected by the, this rate increase because Medicare has a cap on what's allowable. And we discussed that with the board and explained the different levels of transport that occurred and that we were already charging that rate and therefore we would not have additional income for that. That's why that, with that rate increase, the actual net effect of the revenue increase is only a 6.3% increase over that nine-year period. And the rest of the monies are coming from insurance companies who are paying the full ambulance fee, fee rate. And then a very small portion of it, and, and we shared this with the board as well, 1% comes from the private pay customers. That's what's actually collected. I believe they, they bill that a 16% rate and, but we only collect that a 1% of that. And so I believe we shared all that information with the board during the last meeting when we went over these rates.
That's, that's correct. And we also discussed, you know, the Medicare allowable versus what we charge is our write-off every year. And that's where those numbers come from.
Thank you.
Can I, Commissioner Nardi?
And I just want to say something because I think oftentimes in the media, things get a little distorted. This is not going to cost the poor, you know, person on Medicare or Medicaid extra money to take transport. And we're not going to be hurting the fixed income people that are Medicaid or Medicare recipients. So I just wanted that on the record because they will not be charged anything over what we're, what the allowable billable amount is.
Correct.
And one more comment too. I know it costs a lot more than we're even allowed to recollect from the insurance company. So we're, we're actually, it's a, it's a cost test every time we pick up.
That's correct.
Commission, what's your pleasure? Do I have a motion to approve it?
I would like to make, I would like to make that motion, please.
Motion by Commissioner Smith?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Isnardi. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Passes four one. Commissioner Tabia in opposition. We have a 10 o'clock time certain, but I'm going to do a little five-minute break here real quick and then Sheriff, you're up.